It is 6:00 PM. This is the City of Iowa City formal meeting. I would like to welcome everyone to the November 16th City Council formal meeting. The first item is roll call. Roll call, please.
Here.
Ma'am?
Here.
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 Okay.
Before we begin the meeting, I would like to say thank you on behalf of the City of Iowa City to the City Manager, Jafruan, and on behalf of the Mayor, Bruce Teague, the Mayor of Iowa City, to present the certificate of recognition for 10 years of dedicated service. Your many years of services are true testimony of your hard work, commitment, and dedication to the City of Iowa City, and you are truly valued for all that you do, and it will be my honor to present you with this certificate. Item number two is proclamation. The first proclamation is National Native American Hallelujah Month. Whereas long before European settlers colonized the Americas, Native Americans, Alaska Native and Native Hawaiians, and the indigenous people of this continent maintained thriving societies based upon principle, we recognize today as to be immolated and reclaimed, among them sustainability and community. And whereas while Native American, Alaska Native, Native Hawaiians, and indigenous people around the world in this country and the state of Iowa have suffered from and continue to strongly advocate and organize against colonization and reshore carried outward by the United States, Native communities have nevertheless counted, continued to contribute in countless ways to the success of the country, and where less examples of Native Nation include but are not limited to the Rogers Confederacy, of which early Americans attempted to model US democracy after and of which influenced the writing of the US Constitution, or the countless Native Nation who helped dispersed early settler avoid starvation and learn to survive on this land whose geography and agriculture was foreign to them. Also, the co-toker of World War I and World War II, with Native American population today continuing to hold the highest bricabita involvement in the military, and Mary Golda Ross, the first female Native American rocket scientist who began working for Lockheed in 1942, and the first and the current Native American Secretary of the Interior, Deb Hernand, and countless his scholars, athlete, and spiritual leader and mentioned. And whereas we honor the 574 federally recognized tribal nation that continue to thrive here in their homelands, we seek to understand their complex and disparate cultures, language, and histories, as well as indigenous nation and people that were devastated or remain unrecognized due to our nation's continued legacy of the colonization. We recognize the laziness and the continued effort of these nation to strength and restoring tolerance and diversity both within salvores nations and across the society of the United States. Now, therefore, I Mazahir Saleh, Mayor Brutam of Iowa City, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November 2021 to be National Native American Hallelujah Month. Is anyone here to accept? Second item is also proclamation for the Preservative Nurse Week, and this will be read by Pauline Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Pratam Saleh. As a retired perioperative nurse, I am honored and pleased to read the following proclamation. Whereas perioperative nurses specialize in the care of patients immediately before, during, and after surgical and other invasive procedures, and whereas serving in settings ranging from traditional hospital-based operating rooms to ambulatory surgery centers and physicians' offices, perioperative nurses work to provide the safest care possible for patients undergoing surgical and other invasive procedures. And whereas perioperative nurses assess individual patient needs prior to and throughout the surgical or invasive experience, develop, implement, and continuously evaluate a plan for the care of the patient, and prepare the operating room and patient for their procedure. And whereas perioperative nurses are responsible for monitoring all aspect of the patient's condition for the duration of each procedure, and through professional and patient-centered expertise are responsible for care coordination after the procedure, and whereas patients undergoing surgery and other invasive procedures and their loved ones rely on the skills, knowledge, and expertise of perioperative registered nurses, who uphold a long tradition of improving surgical safety and the quality of patient care. And whereas, perioperative nurse week recognizes the contributions perioperative registered nurses make to patient's safety and the opportunities and challenges facing the profession. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mazahir Saleh, Mayor Pratam of Iowa City, and Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim November 14th through 20th, 2021, Perioperative Nurses Week in Iowa City, and urge community members to join me in honoring the perioperative nurses at the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics, Mercy Iowa City, and Iowa City Veterans Affairs for their time and commitment to patient care. And accepting is a dear friend and longtime colleague of mine, Rhonda Price, from the Association of Operating Room Nurses.
I just want to say a brief thing about perioperative nurses, operating room nurses, that just to let you know that we are always there for you, caring for you at all times, from the beginning to the very end of your surgery, and to know that we are always doing our best, even during these trying times and the amount of nursing shortages that are occurring everywhere, the ones that are here and trying, we are doing our very best and proud of helping and serving you people. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number two C, Transgender Day of Remembrance, and this will be by Council Wyner.
Whereas transgender people come from all walks of life and make up a part of a diverse community representing all racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds, and whereas transgender individuals around the world and in the United States are exposed to widespread social stigma, discrimination, harassment, and physical and sexual abuse, and whereas the city recognizes the increasing rate of deaths by violence of transgender individuals nationwide, and the disproportionate effects of this against transgender women of color, and whereas our entire community is diminished when we lose the talents and contributions of any member of our community prematurely, whether due to direct anti-gender, anti-transgender violence, or due to suicide or other health effects resulting from trauma or discrimination. And whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance began in 1999 as a vigil to honor the memory of Rita Hester, a transgender woman who was killed in 1998, and to raise awareness of hate crimes against transgender people. And whereas the Human Rights Campaign statistics show that 80% of anti-transgender homicide victims are transgender women of color, making the tragedy of anti-transgender violence especially heartbreaking in Black and Latino communities. And whereas the City of Iowa City honors the bravery and resilience of transgender individuals who live, work, or play in this city in their authentic gender, and although we are proud of the existing legal protections we have for transgender individuals to pursue their lives free from discrimination in Iowa City, we reaffirm a commitment to ongoing efforts to promote full inclusion of transgender individuals. And whereas the City of Iowa City is committed to diversity, social justice, equity, and mutual respect and safety of those a part of this community. Therefore, on behalf of Mazahir Saleh, Mayor Pratam of Iowa City, and Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby declare November 20th to be Transgender Day of Remembrance in Iowa City. And accepting this declaration, I believe, are Talia Meidlinger and Jamie Ellis.
If you want to say anything.
I am just honored and grateful to live in a community that supports all identities and walks of life, and we show our young people here who volunteered to show up to this late-at-night community meeting that they really don't know much about, and we are honored to accept this award and to live in a community that supports our young people and all different identities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 2D Sudan Proclamation of Support. Whereas Iowa City population include a significant number of immigrants and refugee from Sudan, and whereas most of Sudanese American residents have immediate family members and friends who still live in Sudan, and whereas our Sudanese American residents are very disturbed by the attempt military coup in Sudan, which dissolved the civilian power shared transitional government in place since 2019, and whereas the Sudanese military leader whose society power have attacked anti-coup civilian protester with deadly force. And whereas our Sudanese American residents have called upon Sudan coup leaders to restore civilians' rules and to respect the people's right to freedom of assembly, association, and expression of guaranteed international laws and the UN treaties ratified by Sudan, and whereas the City Council of Iowa City support the city's Sudanese American residents' effort to improve situation, protect protester, and ensure a democracy and prosperity Sudan. Now, therefore, I Mazahir, Mayor Brutam of Iowa City, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby express Iowa City's support for all reasonable offer to improve the situation in Sudan and to ensure that the human rights of the families and friends of the Sudanese American residents are respected. Here to accept is Ali Ahmed and Badr Koko from the Sudanese Community Association.
for the previous elections. Now, we have a council and we have a mayor. Audience, I am a Sudanese American who fled from Sudan since 1999. These documents means a lot and will remind me actually since January 1st, 1863, when Abraham Lincoln issued for the Freedom. I don't have a lot to add for what Mazahir Saleh, Mayor Pro team, alleged. She talked about what's happening in Sudan. What we only need, we need to stop the hijacking of the democracy and let the democracy prevail. Thank you very much.
On behalf of Sudanese community in Iowa City, I would like to express our great appreciation for the City Council proclamation on support for the Sudanese community in Iowa City and our deep concern for the well-being of our families and the people of Sudan. We encourage your efforts to make our voices heard. Your voice can make a difference, can save lives, ensure and safeguard the right to assembly and peaceful protest as a universal right for all people and can in no way be Support the unbreakable will of Sudanese people, inspiration for democracy, peace, and prosperity. Once again, thank you. Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is special presentation from the UCI Jungle Cross World Cup Cycle Cross Race, but unfortunately, we receive, you know, notice from the person, he's not available, from Josh, he's not able to attend tonight, and we request to defer this to the next meeting. So, we don't need any vote for that, right? Now, item number... Now, the consent agenda, we're gonna, I would like a motion to approve the item 4 to 9 for the consent agenda. So, move. Second. Move by Wyner, second by Taylor. Public discussion for only the item from 4 to 9, consent agenda. Is there anyone who want to speak about this item? Okay. Please sign your name, and you have three minutes to speak. Thanks. Hi.
My name is Megan Alter, and I'm a resident, 936 Aspen Court in the South District, and I just wanted to say thank you for setting things in motion to get the South District Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District going. I think it's a really important step to revitalize that area, and I'm extremely pleased that that's in motion.
Thank you. Okay. Council discussion about consent agenda. Okay, then, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Thomas.
Yes.
Wyner.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Saleh.
Yes. Motion passes 5 to 0. Do I have to say the people who are absent, or did that?
I'm sorry?
When I say motion pass 5 to 0, do I have to mention people absent?
No, that's fine.
That's fine.
Bill may note it.
5 to 0. Now, it is time for the public comment. Please limit your comment to three minutes. There is a sign sheet behind the podium. Please make sure to put your name there. If you put your name on the sticker, put the sticker on the basket, and when you come to the podium, please state your name, and where you live beside, please make sure to limit your comment to three minutes. And now, anyone can come speak at this time. Welcome. Just please state your name.
I'm Emily Alsberg, as interpreter, unless there's one here. And then, the first request is, is it possible to have more time for non-English speaking folks?
I think normally we double the time for, yeah, we can do that.
Hola buenas noches. Mi nombre es Ninosca Campos. Soy líder de la coalición de trabajadores excluidos de Iowa City.
Good evening. My name is Ninosca Campos, and I am one of the leaders of the Excluded Workers Fund.
Estamos aquí presentes como hemos estado en todas las reuniones del condado y de la ciudad.
We're here present, just like we have been in all of the county meetings and city meetings.
Para exigir y dejar saber que esta fue nuestra lucha y esta es nuestra lucha.
But to remind everyone and insist that this has been our fight, and this is our fight.
Y como representante de la coalición de trabajadores excluidos de Iowa queremos decirles que queremos trabajar directamente con el condado de Johnson County.
And as one of the leaders of the Excluded Workers Fund, I'd like to tell you all that we want to work directly with the county of Iowa City.
No queremos trabajar...
The county of Johnson. We want to work directly with the county of Johnson County.
No queremos trabajar con ninguna otra organización por mucha más experiencia que tenga.
We don't want to work with any other organization, no matter how much experience they may have.
No queremos trabajar con el Centro de Justicia Laboral.
We do not want to work with Center for Worker Justice.
Preferimos trabajar con los del condado directamente.
We would prefer to work with Johnson County directly.
Porque esta es nuestra lucha y nosotros sabemos las necesidades que hay con las personas excluidas de Iowa City.
Because this is our fight, and we know the needs of the people of Iowa City and the Excluded Workers Fund Coalition.
Mi pregunta es, ¿por qué antes de comenzar esta lucha no se unieron con nosotros?
My question is, when we started this fight, why didn't they join us?
Ahora es fácil venir y querer meterse a la lucha de nosotros.
Right now, it's easy to come and get involved in the fight that we've been doing.
Nosotros no queremos ninguna discriminación que hasta el momento ha habido con la gente latina. Nosotros no queremos ninguna discriminación para la gente latina.
We don't want to face any discrimination.
Por eso somos sinceros y la Coalición de Trabajadores Excluidos de Iowa prefiere trabajar directamente con el condado.
We are serious about this, and we would like to work directly with the Johnson County.
No queremos tanto protocolo, no queremos que en una aplicación pidan tantas cosas.
We don't want that, we don't want it to be cumbersome, we don't want a lot of things being asked for the application.
Esto no sería ayuda, señores. Esto fuera poner barreras a las personas.
That would not be help, that would be putting up more barriers.
Hemos sido lo suficientemente capaces para sacar la economía de Iowa City adelante durante fue la pandemia.
We have been very good at lifting up and working, lifting up the economy in Iowa City during the pandemic.
Así queremos que a cada persona se le llegue esta ayuda.
We want this help to reach every person.
No queremos ir a una institución de que nos dicen que nos van a llamar por teléfono y hasta el día de ahora estamos esperando la llamada telefónica.
We don't want to go to an institution where they say they will call us and they don't, and we're still waiting.
O que cuando uno llame por teléfono le digan que la aplicación no se subió al sistema y que se perdió.
Or that the application was lost and it didn't get uploaded and was lost.
Así que nos sentimos más seguros trabajar con los miembros del condado.
We would like to, we would feel more certain if we could work directly with Johnson County.
A nosotros ninguna organización nos preguntó cuando la pandemia si estábamos bien o estábamos mal.
None of these organizations asked us during the pandemic if we were okay or if we were doing bad.
Y nosotros hicimos los trabajos más pesados en los hoteles, en las carreteras, en diversos trabajos.
And we did the hardest work, and in the hotels, out in the streets.
Ustedes se han puesto a pensar alguna vez en algún momento de su vida si el pueblo latino se fuera un paro nacional?
Have you ever thought about in your life if the Latino community just stopped, like throughout the nation just stopped working?
En una empresa hay maquinarias pero necesitan personas para trabajarlas.
Lots of different companies, factories, they need people to work in them.
Ustedes son personas inteligentes, supieran cuántos millones perdería este país si nosotros los latinos no fuéramos un paro nacional tan siquiera de un día.
You all are very smart, intelligent people. I think you would realize what would happen if the Latino workers stopped in the country.
Así que yo vengo aquí delante de ustedes sin miedo porque nosotros somos las personas que sacamos adelante este país.
That's why I come here in front of you, to ask for this help without fear, because I know that we carry this country.
Así que como representante de la coalición de trabajadores excluidos de Iowa queremos que si esta ayuda va preferimos trabajar el condado que trabaje con nosotros y no queremos otra institución.
So, if this money does go through, we would like to work directly with Johnson County, not with other institutions.
Eso es todo. Gracias.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address, please.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The name and the address, please. State his name and his address.
You want him to say it?
His name.
You want him to say his address as well?
Yeah, where you live, Iowa City, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yes.
Yes, address and name.
Name and address, please, yeah.
Hola buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Leonel Angel Gonzalez.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Loen.
Leonel.
Uh-huh. Loen.
Angel.
Angel.
Gonzalez.
Gonzalez.
332 Friendship.
332, 332 Friendship?
Yes.
Is that it?
Welcome, yeah.
Buenas tardes. Bueno, como estaba comentando mi compañera, yo vengo a decirle o a pedirle que queremos trabajar directamente con el condado.
Just like my friend here said, I'm here to ask you that we would like to work directly with the county.
Y no queremos otras instituciones que se metan en esto. Lo único que pedimos es que trabajemos con el, directamente con el condado.
We don't want other institutions to get involved in this. We, what we're, the only thing we're asking is to work directly with the county.
We, what we're, the only thing we're asking is to work directly with the county.
Porque nuestra confianza está en ellos más que nada, confiamos en ellos. En otras instituciones no confiamos. La cosa es de que que se haga todo bien, lo es todo lo que pedimos.
We have trust in them, our confidence is in them, and that's what we're asking.
Bueno, es todo lo que puedo pedir en esta noche o tardes y pues a todos ustedes, lo único que pido en esta tarde que trabajemos directamente con el condado de Iowa. Muchas gracias.
That's all I'm going to ask for tonight in this moment is that you work directly with Johnson County, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Fatima Said.
Your address?
2532 Bartlett Road, Iowa City, Iowa, 52246.
Welcome.
I'm here tonight to thank you, Iowa, for opening your doors, for opening your schools, your hospitals, and give us second chance to live. I'm here just to ask a favor. Because we've been going and making peace around this town for a long time. We've been making peace for everybody. We sing together. We have good times together to make this community a better place to live. But tonight, I ask for a favor. Can we make peace for Sudan? Can we consider these young people get shut down and gunned down because they're asking for bread and democracy? Because they're looking for a peaceful place to sing, to play. These children get gunned down because they just would like to live. We asking for dignity, safety, and peace for these people in Sudan. We be making peace here in Iowa. Can you help me make peace and stop these people being genocide? People in their for, for a long time, for three, four decades. The same people bringing this genocide to capital Khartoum and keep killing these young people. Keep making Sudan a miserable place to live. Can you help me, please, to bring peace to Sudan? And the children of Sudan can sing for the rain, for the peace, and for happiness. I just ask you, please, we need to stop this genocide being going for decades in Sudan and the same people. The same people, the same people keep doing the same terrible thing for the people of Sudan. Please, please, Iowa. In Iowa, I have my people, I have my friends. We sing together. When we go to school, kind teachers always help me. When I get sick, kind doctors always help me. We sing together, we laugh together, we live in peace, we live together. Muslim, Christian, and Jewish, we live in peace, we live together. Can you help me carry these values over there? To support people who's dying on the streets, asking for bread and democracy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, please say your name and your address.
Mi nombre es Rosalba Gudiel Morataia.
My name is Rosalba.
Gudiel?
Gubiel.
Morataia.
Morataia.
2128 South Riverside, Laura Dry.
Welcome.
52246. Estoy aquí representando a los trabajadores excluidos.
I'm here representing the excluded workers.
Necesitamos trabajar con el condado, no con las otras organizaciones de... La otra organización, ¿cómo se llama? De laboral, trabajadores laborales, ¿cómo es que se llama? Queremos trabajar con el condado, no con otras organizaciones.
We're here to tell you that we'd like to work directly with Johnson County, not with other organizations.
Porque es una lucha, como dijo mi amiga, que hemos hecho juntos.
It's a fight, just like my friend said, that we've done together.
Y no es justo que alguien venga, de que ya han dado el sí de lo que hemos luchado para esta ayuda económica.
Otra vez, no es justo.
No es justo que ya te haga aprobado la ayuda y que otro venga y quiera él salir adelante.
It's not just that we, it's not just justo that we get the money and then someone else comes to get the help. Or, que no es justo, excuse me, que ha aprobado ayuda y otros.
Quieren venir.
Oh, it's not just that we've, you know, finally got to this point, we've got the money and that others come and want to come in at this point.
Somos trabajadores que hemos trabajado en la pandemia y hemos arriesgado nuestras vidas y nuestra familia de contagiarnos.
We're workers that have fought during the pandemic and that risked our lives and our families among COVID, we could get contaminated.
Y no hemos recibido un reembolso de un cheque del gobierno hasta hoy con esta lucha que estamos haciendo.
And we haven't received any kind of money or stimulus check until today, right, during this fight.
Necesitamos de su apoyo, que nos ayuden para trabajar con el condado.
We need your help so that you help us work directly with the county.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es Ingrid Jacqueline Ochoa.
Hi, good evening, my name is Ingrid Jacqueline Ochoa.
Your address, please.
2482 Lakeside Drive.
2482 Lakeside Drive.
Welcome.
Bueno, yo estoy aquí hoy para pedirles de por favor que si ustedes nos pueden apoyar para poder trabajar con el condado porque la verdad de las cosas que otras organizaciones no nos han apoyado.
We're here today, I'm here today to ask you to support us to work directly with the county because the truth is, other organizations have not been supporting us.
Bueno, hablo por experiencia propia porque dos veces me ha dado COVID y he puesto aplicación y simplemente hasta el día de hoy sigo esperando respuesta.
I talk from experience, I've gotten COVID twice, I've put in applications and I'm still waiting to this day.
Y la verdad de las cosas que esta lucha ha sido de nosotros, de todos nosotros.
And the truth is, this fight has been ours, all of ours.
Y por eso estoy aquí para pedirles a ustedes como seres humanos que piensen y toquen un poquito su corazón para que podamos trabajar con el condado de Johnson, es todo lo que les pedimos, buenas noches.
And that's why I'm here tonight to ask you as human beings to look into your heart and help us, we ask you that we work directly with Johnson County, thank you.
Welcome, please state your name and your address.
My name is Pat Bowen, I live at 1210 Village Road in Iowa City. And I'm here tonight, and I've been here before, this public body before. It's been a long six months since we've realized we're able to get this ARP money. All of us have been hit hard by the COVID pandemic. These people that have come up before me have been hit harder than most of us as you can probably tell why from their stories. Many of these frontline workers though have been excluded and left out of the pandemic relief measures in the past. Together with Johnson County, Iowa City is getting together, they're getting nearly $50 million in federal funds through this American Rescue Plan to help people recover from the pandemic. This includes people, like these essential workers that have stood here before you tonight and past nights. These are immigrant workers who've been hurt the most and have risked the most to keep our community going. Direct aid and hazard pay should go directly to the essential frontline workers. And it should be a streamlined application process, so the aid goes directly to the people. They only need to show proof of residency, proof of identity, and self-certification of need. That is all that is needed. We need to get this money in their hands. We've had this money for six months. And cash payments should go directly from the government to the people without any third party. There is already a structure in place and using a third party would only complicate and delay the delivery of the money that has been sitting idle for months. It would also be ill-advised use of taxpayer money to pay a third party to do this delivery of money. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Emily Senrow, I live at 35 Northwestminster Street here in Iowa City. Excluded workers want to go down to the county building to get their check. Before making your decision, I want to remind you of state law and the city's conflict of interest policy. Quote, policy. Iowa law requires that a public employee have complete loyalty to the public when entering contracts on behalf of their employer. City employees therefore must follow Iowa's conflict of interest laws when entering contracts on behalf of the city of Iowa City. Iowa Code Section 362.5 says that city employees shall not have a direct or indirect interest in any contract, job, or sale that is entered into or services that are performed for the city. A city employee has a direct interest in a contract when either the city employee has an employment interest or an ownership interest in the business providing the good or service to the city. City employees have a responsibility to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest. Even an appearance of a conflict of interest. Hang on, I'm not done. According to the US Census Bureau data, there are 2,500 excluded immigrant men and women, children in Johnson County or about 1,250 excluded working adults, not 600. Even if Iowa City matched dollar-for-dollar Johnson County's committed pledge of $2 million, a $4 million Excluded Workers Fund would only be enough to deliver aid of $3,200 to 1,250 excluded adult men and women. A far cry from the 15,000 most excluded workers lost in unemployment compensation and completely leaving out excluded children whose counterparts received 2,500 in stimulus payments since the pandemic began. The Johnson County General Assistance Program is the best available vehicle to effectively and efficiently distribute the aid to impacted workers provided that proof of identity, proof of residency, and a self-certification is needed is the only paperwork required to access the fund. A self-cert should ask simple questions, for example, were you and your spouse laid off? Did you and your spouse both receive unemployment insurance for layoffs? Did you receive all three federal stimulus checks, et cetera? Our 17-group coalition stands ready to assist Iowa City and Johnson County in organizing a series of Sunday clinics to identify and distribute all the available aid to excluded workers in just a few short weeks. This coordination will increase trust between the immigration, the immigrant community, and local government if it is done correctly in accordance with the repeated demands of the excluded workers themselves. This method will also prevent even the appearance of a conflict of interest with any potential third party who may have a vested financial interest in the distribution of the Excluded Workers Fund.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome, please state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Noah, I live in Iowa City. So first off, I'm just gonna... Another person saying fund Excluded Workers, not the embarrassing low $4, $2 million amount combined that actually... Well, I mean, like combined you do at least $15 million is the bare minimum y'all should be doing, not the current $1.5 million proposal from the city. And to do it through the county like they are asking to, you know, first off, save taxpayers' money and not do a very corrupt, clearly will, even if it's not corrupt, you know, this corrupt, appears to be corrupt transaction, they're going through a third party. So yeah, secondly, don't be quiet about your cops doing political arrests in the city. Actually do something about it, the bare minimum y'all should be doing is calling for all officers involved to be fired immediately. That is unacceptable to have political arrests in this so-called democracy. That's disgusting, like y'all just gonna be silent about that or give statements about the optics of it and just only care about that, not the clearly targeted... Anyways, okay. Thirdly, this is accessibility, which is not happening in this city, and I asked y'all about this. Y'all always like telling me to ask you, to ask you questions outside the meetings since you can't publicly comment, so I do that and y'all still ignore me. Mo mo suicides you and Burgis. And Salie, I talked to you before the meeting, I understand why you did not. But the rest of you have no excuse. So why does the city not provide hybrid meetings? So am I just never gonna get answered from the city? I could do this all day. So, no answer, just total silence?
Thank you, Noah. Thank you.
I would like an accessible meeting.
Anyone else? I think now we are in the end of the public comment. I'm gonna move on to agenda item number 11, planning and zoning matter. 11A Comprehensive Plan Amendment Fringe Area Agreement. Resolution to amend the comprehensive plan and approve 28E Fringe Area Policy Agreement between Johnson County and the city of Iowa City. I'm going to open the public hearing. And now staff presentation, Dinah?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council, Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. So this agenda item is a culmination of several years of work by staff and some previous presentations that we've given you about an update to the area, the fringe area agreement between Johnson County and the city of Iowa City. So I'm gonna give a brief refresher on what fringe area is, remind you how we got here, the steps that we've taken to get to this point for this agenda item tonight, and then a little bit about what the agreement includes. Included at your seats is a handout, which will be part of the presentation, but I realized was really difficult to see in here, so I gave you also a copy of that. So what is a fringe area and a fringe area agreement? State law establishes a two-mile boundary outside of the city's boundaries in which the city has some control over what kind of development happens there, primarily through the subdivision. the subdivision approval process. The county still has control over zoning and the designation of uses, but the city essentially has a veto power when it comes to the actual subdivision of land. Alternatively, governments such as the city of Iowa City and the county can come to some other agreement in lieu of that baseline through a 28E agreement in which they lay out an alternate path of working through the development, land development process between the two jurisdictions. Both the city and the county do have a mutual interest in coming to an agreement such as this to provide for the effective and economic and efficient development of land and to respect sensitive areas and features within that boundary. So how did we get here? The city has had a longstanding fringe area agreement with the county going back to the early '90s. Our current fringe area agreement has recently expired. It was in place from October 2006 to October of 2021. In 2018, the county formally requested that we refresh that agreement, and staffs have been working together to do that and bring the proposed agreement forward to you tonight. As a reminder, in 2020 January, staff did present you with our build-out analysis, which was a component of the analysis that went into some of the foundational work of this agreement. And to just refresh a little bit about what was in that build-out analysis when we presented it to you. Basically, we looked at the boundaries of the growth boundary area that had been established previously in previous documents to determine whether that boundary was still an accurate reflection of where the city thought growth would occur and that the city would eventually build out to in the timeframe that the fringe area agreement is intended to cover. The fringe area agreement is intended to cover 20 or 30 years worth of growth, and based on the previous studies that the city had conducted about the capacity for providing infrastructure such as sewer and water, that leaves the groundwork for that growth area boundary. And then we wanted to make sure that that was still a reasonable boundary to be working with and to look at current trends in growth of population and growth of economic areas in and around the city. The study ultimately confirmed that we do have enough capacity in that vacant and underutilized land, both within the city for development and within that the boundary identified as the growth area outside the city. But there were five additional areas that we studied and actually added into that growth area. And I'll go through those briefly here as well. A little bit about what the proposed agreement includes. It kind of reorients the focus to that growth boundary being the designation of whether the components of the process that the city and county will go through are determined by whether the land under discussion in each individual application falls inside or outside of the city's growth area, and then tailors the appropriate actions depending on whether land is located in one of those two areas. Essentially, it gives authority to the city for the areas within the growth area and gives more control to the county for areas outside of that growth area where the city does not anticipate growing in the fringe area horizon. There are some exceptions to that, and those are the subareas that are included in the agreement. Basically, where areas where the city's comprehensive plan will serve as a basis for making determinations in those areas, and there are five subareas, as I mentioned, that were explicitly looked at, as the city and the county talked about these areas. So despite the build-out analysis, there were still some additional areas that needed to be scrutinized because they were important areas in and around the city for other reasons besides basic infrastructure. They tended to function as gateways, were places where highway adjacency was important. There was still some considerations about infrastructure and future growth, and then also sensitive areas. So those areas were added to the growth area. Now, just a little bit of a preview again about the inside and outside designation and the city's control versus the county's control. If something falls within, or inside the growth boundary, it's subject to the urban design standards, which is essentially the city's subdivision regulations. So when we talk about in this agreement, urban design standards or rural design standards, the urban design standards are really the ones that are focused on city-like development. And those things include streets, layouts, and circulation, the way stormwater is handled, and things like erosion control and fire safety. So let's get to the map. So this shows the city at the center, surrounded by a ring of darker and lighter gray areas. The darker gray areas are those areas that the city anticipates future growth occurring in as the city, so annexation essentially in the city's boundaries moving outwards. And the lighter gray areas are outside of what we anticipate growth would occur in in a city-like manner. And then the hashed areas are those five additional subareas that I mentioned. Starting on the southwest corner side of the city, I'll kind of go through this briefly. In this drawing, you can see the darker gray outline and then some green highlights. The far right rectangle there is what was already in the previous agreement, and the two aligned green areas are added as part of this additional agreement with the county. This shows you the zoning, or this shows you what the county's anticipated uses were for those areas, as expressed in their comprehensive plan. So you can see here, those areas in pink and purple and yellow were added into this agreement, basically so that any development that occurs there occurs to city standards. Moving counterclockwise to the south of the city, this triangle here again was an area that was added beyond what the inside-outside designation would have added, but again, this is one of those areas along 218 that functions as a gateway. It's also designated as for commercial development by the county as a use, and so we wanted to ensure that city standards were really the rule when that does, development there does occur. Continuing to move counterclockwise, Subarea 3 is an industrial, an area adjacent to the city's industrial park. And again, there's no actual development planned here by the county, but it's just ensuring that an asset of the city is protected, future industrial growth can continue, and so again, another kind of unique feature that was incorporated into the agreement. Subarea 4, as we continue to go counterclockwise, is now on the northeast corner of the city. This is an area along Interstate 80. Here, this shows the uses designated again by the county's comprehensive plan, primarily commercial. Some things are already zoned there for commercial, so this is already very well-established as a commercial gateway, but again, incorporating it into the area that the city would have more influence over. And the fifth area is directly north of the current city limits along North Dodge Street. This is a tiny, a very small strip of land, really as a buffer between city and county rural development, just to get to ensure more city influence, showing it here, kind of in that larger future land use plan map. So this is the handout that's at your desk. I wanted to give it to you so you could see it a little bit better, but it's meant to highlight the process and the inside-outside designation that I've been mentioning. It lays out on the left-hand side of the screen the various steps in the development process for land. So working from the top to the bottom on the left-hand column, you would see annexation, then rezoning, which is a designation of use, then the steps in the subdivision process for preliminary and final planning, then finally, the, excuse me, site, site planning, and then I may have skipped this step at the top, which has actually the development of those plans that I've been mentioning, like the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan massed by the county. So in the peachish, orangish, orangish color is the rules that would be adopted in this fringe area agreement for the treatment of those steps of the development process when land falls within that boundary that's been established as the city's growth area. So along the next set of columns, it shows you the level of review and the timing of that review, starting with typically staff, then proceeding through the city's planning and zoning commissions, then on to this body at city council, and then also including the county's similar processes where their staff reviews something, their planning and zoning commission makes recommendations, and the board of county supervisors makes decisions. So boxes that are lightly colored are stages in which those groups are making recommendations and kind of spiraling, spiraling those recommendations up to the final deciders. The darker color boxes are where the final decision gets made. So in pretty much everything except annexation, where we have the final say in whether something comes into or out of the city, these processes flow from left to right and include, for the most part, a final determination by the county. However, you can see there are some stages where the city then has more control, and those are the subdivision stages, where unless the city also is approving a subdivision, it cannot proceed on to the county. So that's pretty standard and similar to what the county, or sorry, what the state enabling legislation would say. However, there are some things that have been added here to this process and this version of the fringe area agreement, and those are those boxes shaded or bounded in yellow. And that's meant to represent things that are new in this agreement and that are essentially adding to what the city has control and comment over. So what they're really showing here is that the city has become more involved upfront in a lot of these decisions, so essentially having more say in how the county formulates its, or more involvement really, in how the county formulates its long-range plans and making sure that we're plugged into that process. And then also clarifying the difference between the city and the county's definitions of how large a subdivision is. The county used a different, uses a different definition of a smaller subdivision when it's three or less lots. So this is actually bringing those smaller subdivisions into review and recommendation and final decision by the city when they fall within the city's growth area. If you shift to the right-hand side of this table, the blue area, very similar color coding for when something's a recommendation, when something's a final decision. The things that are bounded in red are the processes the city has taken a step back from being involved in. So we would no longer be involved in some of these stages of development when they fall outside the area that the city is concerned primarily about the way and style of growth. So in these cases, there might be still some notification that the city receives that these actions are occurring at the county, but for the large part, the city is not making a recommendation at the planning and zoning commission, and those cases would no longer be coming to city council. So that's a lot of information, but this was something that I found really helpful as we started to talk about all of this and think about how this would work in the future, so I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Any question for Danielle from the council?
Okay, because this is a 28E agreement and is adopted as part of the city's comprehensive plan, it gets used to review applications, and the comp plan gets referenced. So in order to adopt this new fringe area agreement, and then therefore, there would need to be a change to the comprehensive plan, which is why this Agenda item is presented in this way. Whenever we review something for a comprehensive plan amendment, we go through a review of certain criteria, two criteria in fact, whether circumstances have changed to warrant this change to the comp plan, and whether the proposed amendment will be compatible with other policies and provisions of the plan itself and any district plans or amendments thereto. Staff worked very hard to craft this agreement to uphold the ideals of our comprehensive plan, to ensure that the city's style of development is the primary way that the city can grow within those boundaries closest to our current city limits and the anticipated growth boundary. So we do feel that these criteria have been met. As far as next steps, again, I show this to you most times. This is a little complicated because this is a mutual agreement, so the county is going through this process as well. They have already reviewed the proposed fringe area agreement, both at their planning and zoning commission and at their county board of supervisors in October. It is coming to you from our planning and zoning commission with the recommendation of approval. P&amp;Z did review this on October 7th with a vote of 5 to 0. They are recommending approval to you tonight. I'm happy to answer questions.
Yes, a lot of information. I saw you don't have way. Any question for the staff? I just thank you for laying it out so clearly, appreciate it. Okay, now is public discussion. Would anyone from the public would like to discuss this item? If you do, please come to the podium and state your comment. I see no one. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, I would like to, if somebody can give me a motion to approve?
So moved, Thomas?
Moved by Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Second by Taylor. Discussion, council discussion?
Well, this reminds me of our earlier conversation this evening with the county on the American Rescue Plan. You know, anytime we can, we have areas of concern that are of importance to both of us, you know, it's certainly to each of our benefits to try to work out an agreement between the two entities. And as Danielle mentioned, this took some time. It's a complicated, it's a complicated matter, how to address these fringe areas. And, you know, the emphasis here has been more on process and trying to identify areas of where we anticipate growth to occur and to try to better control those outcomes from the city's standpoint so that they are consistent with our comp plan. So, you know, I just want to thank staff. This was a, you know, a real labor to get through this process and apply it to, identify and apply it to the various areas around the edges of Iowa City. So I will be supporting this.
Any other discussion?
I think this is a pretty technical and very staff-intensive process, so thank you for that. But I certainly will have more confidence when we look at things where the fringe area agreement comes into play and seeing how a project aligns with that. It will, I'll feel better about how that came to be, knowing that this was so carefully worked on for a long time to get us here. Thank you.
I really appreciate the focus of this, of this new proposed agreement on the areas that are actually of interest to the city with respect to growth areas and areas in which we really do have an interest. It seemed that under the old agreement, we were spending some time looking at things over which we literally had no, no voice at all, so this really seems to split the responsibilities fairly inequitably.
I agree with what you said, but also, the good thing is, like, for the identifying, like, city growth area, that sometimes we have, like, some kind of control. We don't have, like, the control for the other, but at least we have, you know, some control where the bills there will be out for, you know, like, complying with the city's standards. If there is no further discussion, roll call, please.
Teague?
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 11B, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Southwest District. Resolution to amend the Southwest District Plan and IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan to allow intensive commercial and open space land use for the property south of IWV Road SW and west of Slough Road. And I will open, the applicant request deferred, I will open the public hearing. And can I get a motion to defer? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, moved by Weiner, and second by Taylor. Any council discussion? Then, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Motion passes 5 to 0.
You should probably ask if there are any opposed. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure.
Go ahead. What was that?
Could you ask if there are any opposed? I want to make sure that that's clear.
Is there any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, if I jump in just for clarification in the audience, if you didn't catch that, the applicant has asked that this item be deferred one meeting, so the council is in the process of deferring the consideration, meaning it will appear on the next agenda for the first vote.
And to be clear, I assumed the motion was to defer to the next meeting on November 30th.
Yes, the motion is to defer to the next meeting, like, on the 30th.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're gonna discuss all this again next meeting. We received it deferred late, that's why.
And for the further benefit of the public, there of course are two subsequent items that are related. They've asked the same thing for those, so we'll be opening public comment, and I assume council will again be moving to defer.
For item, all the item, 11B, C, and D will be deferred. They have a request for defer, and we see, that's what I want to say. Okay, 11C, annexation IWV Road Southwest. Resolution to annex approximately 70.39 acres of land Resolution to annex approximately 70.39 acres of land located west of the intersection of IWV Road SW Southwest and Slower Road. Also, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And the applicants request defer to the next meeting. Can I get a motion to defer for the meeting on the 11th area?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, second.
Second.
Second by Weiner. Council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item 11D, resuming of IWV Road Southwest. Orders, contrary, resuming approximately 53.36 acre from county agriculture to intensive commercial, approximately 17.03 acres from county agriculture to interim development commercial, and approximately nine acres from rural residential to intensive commercial for land located west of the intersection of IWV Road Southwest and Slower Road. Also, applicant request deferred. And I opened the public hearing. Can I have a motion to defer to 11th area, November 30th? Moved by Taylor, second.
Second, Thomas.
Second by Thomas. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abused? Motion passes five to zero. Item 11E, zoning code amendment from base zoning and standards. Orders Amendment Title 14, zoning code and Title 15 lands subdivision to create farm based zoning and standards consist with the South District Plan. Can I get a motion to adopt? Pass on the buck. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Weiner. Second by Bergus. Public discussion? Is anyone in the public would like to speak on this item? Council discussion?
I just think it's, it's really great to finally see something like this that seems to me like it has all the elements of a balanced community for that South District Plan. So I'm really happy to see this.
It's been a long time coming. Agreed.
Okay, roll call please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Motion passes five to zero. Item number 12, flown rake of screening replacement. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the construction and screening replacement project. Establish amount of bed security to accompany each bed directly city or clerk to post notice to the bedder and fixing time and place for the receive of the bed. I am going to open the public hearing, and we will start with staff presentation. Ben Clark, welcome.
My name is Ben Clark. I work in the Engineering Division of the Public Works Department, and I'm here to talk about the Influent Rake and Scream Replacement Project. This project is located at our wastewater treatment facility. It's on the far south edge of town, next to Kicker Soccer Park, if you haven't been there. And I don't know if you can see this image very well. I found this today. I thought it was kind of interesting. This image actually shows the entire plant, but the areas in orange were, were upgraded during the 2012 project when we demolished the north plant and moved all those facilities to the south plant. And you'll notice there's some areas that aren't shaded in orange, so those, those areas didn't really have any work. They haven't had any major work done in them since really, since this plant was built 20 years ago. And the two areas I have circled, the first one on the north end is where this project is going to take place. And the other circled area is the digester complex, and you'll probably be hearing a lot more about that, you know, as the year progresses here. We're gonna have a major project there. So treating wastewater is basically a series of processes that takes, you know, dirty water, makes it clean. This is a diagram of sort of our pretreatment phase, and this is kind of where we get the debris and grit out of the wastewater that flows into the plant. And if you can see that, the area that's got a red square around it, that's, that is the very first process. That's the screening process, and that's what we're gonna replace in this project. This is an image of what a screen and rake looks like. It's a little hard to get a picture of ours because it's, it goes straight down about three stories, but you can see on the left, the wastewater comes in from the sewer pipes. It's got a lot of sticks, larger debris, towels, things of that nature. Those get hung up in the screen, and then they get, they get lifted up by a rake to the surface where we then dispose of them. We send, send that debris to the landfill. This is a picture of, these are our actual screens. This is the top of them right here. So those, those rakes lift the debris up and they dump it in these hand carts. Staff then have to take these hand carts year-round. They have to push them to the grit building where they dump them out, put lime in them, and then about once a week, they load it with the front-end loader into a dump truck, take to the landfill. It's a very labor-intensive process. So this, this project will actually replace those with a, with a roll-off container, and that's what this is a picture of. So it'll just take one person to hook it on. They can pull it up on the back of a truck and drive it to the landfill. Here's a, here's a picture of the Influent Pump Station. So there'll be a small building addition off this that'll hold that roll-off container that I just showed you. Also be replacing some of this worn-out pavement. You can see it's in pretty bad shape. It's, some of it's been replaced with gravel. Just an overhead view of the project. So on the, in the blue square off the left of the building is going to be the addition for the roll-off. And then we'll also have another sort of a dump station for septic haulers. If they bring in a load that's heavy and grit, they can dump it there. It'll pre-screen it. Don't have to send it through the pumps. So that's pretty much it for the project. If anybody has any questions.
Any question to the staff? Thank you. Public discussion? Anyone would, the public would like to address this matter? If none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved Bergus.
Moved by Bergus, second.
Second.
Second by Weiner. Council discussion? If none, roll call please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Thomas. Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item number 13, Musketeen Avenue, American Legion Road Speed Limit. Orders amended Title 9 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 3 entitled Rules of the Road, Section 6 entitled Speed Restriction, Subsection B entitled Expectation to Modify the 35 mile per hour SB Zone for American Legion Road and Musketeen Avenue. And this is a first consideration. Can I get a motion to get first consideration?
So moved Thomas.
Moved by Thomas. Second.
Taylor.
Second by Taylor. And now staff, we have Kent here to give us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. Real quickly, the ordinance before you is simply to modify the existing 35 mile per hour speed limit to 25 mile per hour for a portion of American Legion Road as well as Musketeen Avenue. Currently, the existing 35 mile per hour speed limit extends roughly from Juniper through the new roundabout at Scott Boulevard and then east to Buckingham, Buckingham Lane, excuse me. As the project was completed for that section of roadway, it's now just a little bit of code cleanup to try and get that speed limit down to 25 mile per hour. And it's important to note that during the design of the project, elements were incorporated to convert the roadway, of course, from a rural to urban cross-section with curb and gutter, but there were also some elements offered to increase the amount of multimodal travel in that corridor, some buffered bike lanes, 10-foot-wide travel lanes, which are narrower, narrower than we're used to, as well as a 10-foot-wide sidewalk on the north side of American Legion Road, and then a 6-foot sidewalk on the south side of American Legion Road. This is the first, of course, phase of the project that we're talking about tonight. And then next year, after the next phase from Buckingham Lane out to Taft Avenue is completed, then we would come back and ask for that speed limit to be lowered as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
There is a school zoning speed anyway on that street, right? It will be just consistent from Scott Boulevard until?
Correct. So this would be, this would make it consistent all the way, once, once we get through the project next year, consistent all the way essentially from the new roundabout at Scott Boulevard, all the way to Taft Avenue, except for the school speed limit zone, which is 20 mile per hour during school hours there for the new elementary school.
Sure. Any question to the staff?
No, but I mean, but it sounds like it's in line with what you've been talking about, Council, Councilor Thomas, and trying to, trying to align the, make, make the streets such that they are conducive to go and the speed that we, that it's safe to go.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Now, public discussion. Is there anyone would like to address this matter from the public? Council discussion?
Well, as Councilor Weiner mentioned, this, you know, this is a project where, where some of the design standards that are associated with reducing traffic speed have been implemented. So I'd like to thank staff for doing that on this project. I hope it's successful. You know, there are a lot of moving parts, so to speak, that go into, you know, how drivers perceive what speed it is, it is safe to drive at, and the ones that Kent referenced, you know, the traffic lane widths, having the bike lanes and so on, I think, point speeds in that direction, and I hope it's successful. Again, why, why is it important that it's successful? We're trying to develop our, our streets so that they are safe for everyone. You know, we have the bike lanes, we have pedestrians, and it's, it's clear from a lot of evidence that in order for that to work well, the traffic speeds need to be in that 20 to 25 mile an hour speed limit so that these, these different modes of travel can cohabit that right-of-way. So, you know, it's an important goal, since we're trying to move, move our transportation alternatives into the picture. So I hope it's successful.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call please.
Bergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Thomas. Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 14, annual TIF certification filling. Resolution directing the filling of TIF certification under Iowa Code Section 403.19 for 2021 end-of-year certification of urban renewal projects. Can I get motion to approve? So moved. Moved by Weiner, second.
Second.
Bergus.
Second by Bergus. Staff comment in presentation or, yeah, Wendy Ford.
Hi, I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator. And tonight you have actually two items related to TIF, and I'll just use this time here to reference, make reference to both of them. This first one is the resolution that authorizes the certification of debts and obligations for our tax increment financing projects that you've voted on prior. This just ensures that you are on board with the funding amounts, reduction of funding amounts, or the stopping of funding amounts of TIF coming into the city for those projects. And in order to do that, you saw in your packet, a set of forms. There are basically three forms. One, that would initiate collection of tax increment for a project, and we have a couple of those. For example, the TIF-funded industrial energy efficiency grants that we'll be giving would be included in a Form 1. A Form 2 requests a specific dollar amount less than the full amount of available increment, and that happens on occasion, such as with the Hilton Garden Inn project, where a portion of their incentive was the hotel motel tax. Well, we don't want to provide the amount in TIF that was provided by hotel motel tax. So we reduce the amount of TIF required for that. And Form 3 actually ends the collection of tax increment. The, I guess the main takeaway is, that I would say, is that these tax increment financed projects have been very valuable to the city over time. I also had a chart, or a table, I should say, in your packet that illustrated that the base value of all of the projects that the, the city has funded with tax increment financing was $30 million. And if you compare that base value with today's value of $254 million, you can see that through TIF and the use of TIF leveraging projects that might not otherwise happen in Iowa City, we now have new taxable value of $223 million in Iowa City. The, the other, or the next item is actually the annual urban renewal report to the state, and that is essentially a look back at how the sources of tax increment financing funding and the uses have been, been used, basically. So those are essentially my comments for the night on those two reports. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I see Dennis over there, and he might be able to pinch hit if I didn't have an answer for you.
Any question for Wendy or Dennis?
No, just thanks for, especially for the energy efficiency ones, but the, my, my perception is that Iowa City does TIF well.
Now, public discussion. Would anyone from the public would like to address this matter? I see none. Council discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mims.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Thomas. Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item number 15, annual urban renewal report to the state. Resolution approving the physical years ending 2021 annual urban renewal report. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved Thomas.
Moved by Thomas. Second.
Second.
Second by Weiner. And we get the presentation. Now, I will open to the public. Anyone would like to discuss this item? I see none. Council discussion? Roll call please.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Thomas. Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 16, council appointment. A berman must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specified qualifications are stated. 16A, Board of Adjustment, one way. 16A, Board of Adjustments, one vacancy to fill five years, term January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2026. Council discussion?
Well, that position, the, the term expired from Mark Russo. Mark, Mark, I think, had been appointed just a few months ago, so I would support appointing him again for a full term.
I agree.
He, he also happens to be the only applicant, but it seems like a good...
Yeah, I agree. Okay, then we need a motion to appoint Mark Russell again.
I'll move John.
I move Mark Russo to be appointed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he just moved that.
Second.
Because I see, like, a lot of people saying the same thing, so we're gonna go right with. Yeah. Okay, you, is moved by Thomas?
Yes.
And second by Taylor. Okay. In all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 16B, Board of Appeals, Licensed Election. Board of the Bill Licensed Election, or if a qualified trade representative does not submit an application within three months of the announcement of the vacancies, a member may be appointed who is qualified by his experience and training to pass on a matter pertaining to building construction. One vacancy to fill a five-year term from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2025. Discussion. Council discussion?
It appears that GT Carr is the only current applicant.
And he does, in his history, does have some electrical experience. He's not licensed electrician, but he has the electrical knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if he might resign in the future, but he says he's willing to serve until, essentially, until a licensed electrician can be found to serve.
Are we required to leave it open for three months for an electrician to potentially come forward, or can we go ahead and appoint?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Right, I think three months. I was about to lean over and ask Kelly how long this position has been advertised, because I, I didn't check.
It, it says at the top, council announcement date was 10/6/2020.
Oh, yeah, then we're good.
Yeah. Thank you. I was thinking 21.
Thanks for catching that.
Any?
I move to appoint GT Carr.
Second.
Moved by Burgess, second by Weiner's. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Climate Action, item number 16C, Climate Action Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2022 to December, to December 31st, 2024. And on this item, I just would like to, everybody, I guess, received the email from Notion, and I think we need to discuss that. Do you have it, you have it on the late handout?
Right.
Before we can move on this.
Right. Also, also, and on the three we have, the gender balance requirement of two male and one nun.
Two male and one nun.
I agree that we do need to talk about John Fraser's application before we talk about any of the other applicants. It sounds as though he's been a very strong member for that commission, and I myself have forgotten things or, or missed times on things, so I think we should give him the benefit of the doubt, and I, I would approve his application.
And can I ask a question, Kelly? Is John has, like, a full term, or was like?
You mean initially?
Uh-huh.
Did I have the, he probably stated on his application if he was serving a full...
As, as Kelly's looking at that, the, the Climate Action Commission is, is so new that it would be, he would have been one of the first appointments. But we staggered those terms, so that's probably what we need to, that's probably the answer you're seeking, is whether his initial term was two, three, or four years, however we staggered that.
Okay.
Are we moving on to other?
Yona.
Other applicants, and, since we're filling two spots?
Yes, but the first one, I think, I wanna do, like, one by one.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay.
That's easy for me.
Okay, so John.
Yeah, anyone would like to?
So I nominate John Fraser.
Okay, motion?
Fill one of the spots?
Can we, I just had a comment about that. Are we gonna discuss each one individually? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. That, that's for me, it will be easy, each one individually. Now, we're starting with John. If everybody agree, and I guess, Council Taylor, she already put a motion?
I just had a comment about it. Just recall that we had a very similar situation with the Chair of the HCDC Commission, who was V at the time, who came and let us know that they also had dismissed the deadline of submitting the application. So I don't know if that case is distinguishable from this one, but at that time, we did not give them the opportunity to serve again.
I believe some of the council here was in favor of that. Myself, I was in favor on that, and I guess Council Taylor also was in favor of that, but the rest of the commi, the council wasn't.
For what it's worth, Kelly and I spent a good deal of time looking back and forth at this application and so forth, and because the, the date of the application compared to the advertising date, actually, it was within a year, and thus, the application was, was valid. Am I remembering that right?
The previous. He had thought his term was ending last year.
Yeah, a year ago, yeah.
And so he applied, and when we realized his term wasn't ending, we emailed him, notified him that it wasn't ending, and that he should reapply coming this October, when it's announced. But the date of that initial application was October, November 3rd.
Yeah.
And so the council announcement date on this one was October 3rd. So he'd be within that 12-month period from last year's application.
Okay.
He also did submit one late, so all of that was in your late handouts on Monday. So, I mean, I could make an argument either way. It's totally up to you guys whether, you know, you base it off of last year's application or consider it...
Right. My, my point is to answer or to address Councilmember Burgess's point, and I think it's distinguishable. I'm, I'm not as familiar with the facts of V's application, but this one is within one year. It, it was, you know, almost a year ago, inadvertent in that way, but it was still within 12 months, and so you could act on that application.
Which is, the application is really, still good to be used.
That's right.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful.
Okay. Okay. Okay, then I need a motion to appoint John. Moved by Taylor, right?
So moved.
Second, please.
I will second that, Thomas.
Second by Thomas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0. And all, okay, that's the first male. We still have another male and one female, right? Am I right?
One either gender, if I recall correctly.
Oh, doesn't matter, okay.
One, I'm sorry. One male and then one of either gender.
Okay, sure, sure. Then?
I was impressed with Gabriel Sturdevent's application. Had been a climate action ambassador and is in environmental studies at the U. I would recommend him.
Who?
Gabriel. Gabriel Sturdevent. S-T-U-R-D-E-V-A-N-T.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I liked his application as well.
All right. Weiner and Burgess?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, then I would like a motion to approve Gabriel.
So moved.
Second? By, who seconded?
I'll second Thomas.
Thomas? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Abused? Same sign? Okay, motion passes 5 to 0, to appoint Gabriel. Okay.
So we have one more. With respect to the third one, I, she currently resides in Cedar Rapids, but is supposed to be, it said she's moving to Iowa City by, by January, which is when, I believe, this appointment begins. That's Elena Swanson. I know that she applied once before in the summer for, when there was an opening in this, and it, and it's, and she, she struck me as really, really well-qualified. Plus, I'm really interested in getting some of the younger generation onto this, onto this commission. So, I mean, I, on the, on base, on, with the requirement that she would be here in Iowa City by that time, I would be interested in appointing her. I don't know if there's any way to ensure that. She said, states that in her application.
Yeah, my, my only concern about that is, is I don't know if you can make an appointment contingent upon follow-through of a change of residence like that. It might put the council in an awkward position come January 1, if she doesn't live here, of having to remove her.
And also, like, the time of the appointment, she's not...
Not presently a resident, as I understand it, yes.
Well, I also, I also liked Michael Enon Lynch. Her application, was she was someone that I was, would suggest?
I agree with that.
Okay.
That's fine.
You do?
I agree.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So I'd move Michael Elon, Enon Lynch, be appointed.
She's a female.
Okay, moved by Thomas?
I'll second.
Second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any, and opposed, same sign? Motion passes 5 to 0. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, taken by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abused, same size? Motion passes 5 to 0. 16D, Human Rights Commission. Three vacancies to fill three-years' term, January 1st, 2022, 2022 to December 31st, 2024. Council discussion?
And two, gender balance requirement, two female, two female, one nun.
Two female, and we need one nun.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, I, for this one, I, I would propose that we reappoint Siri Brune, who's only been, who's, would be one of the females. She's, we appointed her several months ago. She appears to have been working very hard on it, and I thought wrote a very compelling request to be reappointed to a full term.
I agree.
I agree.
I support that.
I agree too. And the second female?
I, I don't have a strife. Did you wanna take these one by one, as we have before?
No, this is, I'm gonna do it, the whole of them together for the Human Rights Commission.
Okay, so we got two, two women and one. I don't, I mean, I, there's a number of people I like, but I, go let somebody else go.
We had 30-something candidates, and I applied to all of them. They're all, they're all very good. Very good, very well-qualified. I, I wasn't sure about Ali Ahmed, A-H-M-E-D. Said that he had served before on the HRC, which apparently was quite some time ago, but he's president of the Sudanese-American community, and it, it would be great to, to have a member from the Muslim and Sudanese community on there.
I was born that because, not because I'm Sudanese, but because Adil Adams, he was Sudanese too, when that, his term is experienced, and I would like really to see continuum of representative of immigrants' community on the board.
Right. See, the al, the other al, the, the alternative for that is also, is the, is the, actually the second person in the packet, Asma Ali, who seemed quite well-qualified. So I don't, I don't, it's hard for me to differentiate between whether one is more qualified one person, but they both seem to have substantial qualifications.
I guess that Ali, because, like, for example, last time, Adil applied again, and we said, oh, yeah, he had went in, we can give him second term. And Ali, I don't think he, he have, like, not a full term, maybe, if I can recall very good. I don't know, Kelly. When he, it was a long time ago, but I, I think he joined to take somebody else.
Previous.
Yeah, previous term, and he, he haven't have any, like, full complete, and since we've been giving people second term, I think we can appoint him.
I move appointing Ali Ahmad to the Human Rights Commission.
We're gonna do it all of them together.
Oh, you're gonna do them all together?
Yeah, we need one more female, I think.
Or one nun. No, yeah.
Yeah, because...
Oh, wait, two female.
Yes.
Another female, yes.
One more female.
Sylvia Johns?
Who is in favor of Sylvia Johns?
I, I had circled her as a possibility. She said she's a member of the, she's a BIPOC woman, and been in Iowa City for a couple of years, and she's dedicated her career to human rights for all, and that it would be an honor to serve, so I, I liked what she had to say.
Global education and rescuing scholars.
Okay, now, we have all of them, we have Sylvia Johns and Ali Ahmed, with the third woman in the beginning, we said?
Siri Brune.
Siri Brune. Yeah, can I have a motion to approve the three of them?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor?
Second.
Taken by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abused, same sign? Motion passes 5 to 0. 16E, item number 16E, Parks and Recreation Commission. Three vacancies to fill a four-years' term, January 1st, 2022 to January 31st, 2025. Council discussion? Do you have anyone in mind? We have three vacancies.
This is one, one female, one male, and one nun.
One female, that's easy. One female, one male, one nun.
One, whatever.
Anyone in mind?
Well, I would, I'm supportive of Brian Morelli for one of the male...
Brian?
Brian Morelli.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Good. And the second? Female or nun?
Michelle Wiegand, I don't know how to pronounce her name, focused on youth development, social work, and outdoor ed.
She said some really good things about Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Yeah, I had her as well.
One more?
Missy Forbes.
Who?
I had her as well.
Missy Forbes. Great when we agree.
Great. Guess I need a motion to approve Brian, Michelle, and Missy.
I move that we, that we appoint Missy Forbes, Brian Morelli, and Michelle Wiegand to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, moved by Weiner?
I'll second.
Taken by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abused, same sign? Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 16F, Public Art Adversary Committee, At-Lot. One vacancy to fill a three-years' term, January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2024. Any, is this gender balance or anything? Council Weiner?
This is just a one, one male, right? I think, isn't it?
One male?
Right, just one male.
And Edward Boyken is serving his first term. I, I would approve him.
He seemed like, from the current applicants, he seemed like the only one who was a good, who would be a good fit right now.
Right. The other ones listed several commissions they wanted to be on, but his...
And we already appointed Gabriel Sturdevent to the Climate Commission.
Right, right. So I would say I would move, we appoint Edward Boyken, B-O-Y-K-E-N, to Public Art.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Taylor?
I'll second.
Taken by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abused, same sign? Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 16G, Senior Center Commission. Two vacancies to fill a three-years' term, January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2024. January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2024. And Counsel Weiner, is there a gender balance here?
The two males, but we only have like, I think there's only one applicant.
One applicant.
Yeah, happens to be a male.
So, we'll just re-advertise the other, keep advertising the other vacancy until filled?
But we can appoint this now, right?
You can.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like someone, Douglas Corte is his name. It sounds like someone who has taken a number of classes at the Senior Center and has some expertise to offer when it comes to website development, educational website development.
I'm, I'm usually a little reluctant to appoint someone that lists several boards and, and commissions, but he did mention his interest in the Senior Center more than the others and this commission really needs members, so.
Yes, they do.
I would agree.
All right. Can I have a motion to appoint him?
So, move to appoint Douglas Corte to the Senior Center Commission.
Okay, second. Moved by Weiner, second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abos, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Item seventeen, vacancies new. Applicant must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specified qualification are stated. Staff will not publish addition notice after the initial announcement, but will continue to advertise vacancies on the city website and council agenda. More information may be found on the city website or in the city clerk office. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment, December 31st, 2023. Applicant must be received, applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 28, 2021. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment, June 30th, 2023. Applicant also must be reside, application must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 28, 2021. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Some moved.
Moved by Taylor.
Second.
Taken by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, abos, motion passes five to zero. Item number eighteen, announce of vacancies previous. Applicant must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of old unless specified qualification are stated. Staff will not publish addition notice after the initial announcement, but will continue to advertise vacancies on the city website and council agenda. More information may be found on the city website or the city clerk office. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an expired term upon appointment, June 30th, 2023. Applicant must be, application must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, November 23, 2021. Airborne Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-years' term, January 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2025. Airborne Zoning Commission, Iowa City representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term, January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2027. Board of the, Board of Abiles, building design professional, one vacancy to fill a five-years' term, January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2026. Hostile Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-years' term, effective upon appointment, January 30th, June 30th, 2024. Hostile Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, effective upon appointment, June 30th, 2022. Vacants will be, remain open until filled. Item number nine, and this is, we are, Elizabeth and Anne.
Hi, Counsel. Oh, we have a few announcements tonight, so I'm just gonna send an email after I finish reading them off, so you all have them. The first is our GR Director, Student Government's GR Director and the President and a few other execs are going to DC this week to advocate for a few issues, including affordable housing, Title IV, college affordability and Pell Grants, increased DACA programming especially for graduate students, SNAP and other basic needs funding and voting rights. And they're talking to a few different US Congress members, so that's a really cool opportunity. The airport shuttle going between Cedar Rapids and Iowa City is going to be up and running during Thanksgiving and winter break. All riders just have to pay a $10 fee and all the information for that is on the, on the undergraduate student government website or on any of our social media channels. And then the USG Director of Health and Safety is looking to compile off-campus mental health resources for the university counseling services website. So, we would like to talk to like any city staff that knows more about these resources, so we're able to send those over to them.
We also have a couple of affordable housing recommendations that Sarah Barron had presented to the Affordable Housing Commission, these policies last week that we came up with and we want to advocate for them to counsel as well. The first being to spread out annual inspections of houses to allow adequate time for complaints, updating the safety codes to encourage biannual auditing. Educating renters, especially students where report safety concerns and concerns with landlords, accountability is also of a priority and was mentioned previously as well. Similarly, we want to make sure that the audit includes checking for recycling and updated recycling signage, making, this is to help, make renters aware of who is in charge of landlord accountability and where to go. We would like to also create a city magnet that goes on fridges with this information as a possible option. And we want to reinforce that landlords could possibly lose permits if they fail to meet safety accountability and sustainability standards. From our Runners Guide, we found that it was very easy for landlords to get away with a lot of these standards, as well as just advocate to make them less so. Our second recommendation is to ensure, or is to create a community solar farm where renters can opt-in to participate and pay a tax but receive benefits with sustainable energy, as well as reducing utility costs in consequence. Third, we would like to make sure students are able to qualify in affordable housing efforts downtown through city channels, including opportunities for rent abatement and subsidies, especially to low-income students and less traditional students, including undocumented students. We would do this by increasing the threshold to 20% of housing is affordable for students and community members. And then finally, we would hope to create a rent abatement program during homeless week that has opportunities for students to stay in city housing if they have nowhere else to go. I'm sure you all are familiar with homeless week and how that's an endemic issue that we need to address. And as Anna had mentioned earlier, these will all be emailed out to you as well. We're excited to meet with Counselor Weiner at the start of December to talk about affordable housing and we'll be following up with you all to hopefully discuss this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, USG. Any question to them or comment?
What a great report. I mean, really, a lot of, a lot of very detailed thinking, thought has gone into it. That's, we should.
I agree.
Take a look at what you, what you send us. Thank you.
I just sent the email out, so all of you should have it.
Sure, thank you. Okay, item twenty, city council informations, and this is, you can report in any meeting you attend or upcoming meeting or any, you know, item of interest.
Mayor Potem, I'll jump in. I, I have some comments that I wanted to make relating back to what Counselor Weiner and you had mentioned during the work session that stemmed from the arrest of our Truth and Reconciliation Commission Chair. But really, what I want to speak on is thinking about the systems involved because systemically, in this case, I, I want to presume good intent. I, I don't believe this was a political hit. I don't want to believe it was anything targeted. And so, as a system, what happened was what was supposed to happen. It was a viable and reasonable outcome to have someone pulled off the street in a non-emergency, to be put in handcuffs and put in a cage for seven days. Systemically, we think that that was an appropriate reaction to that circumstance. And if we agree that this particular case was wrong and should have been handled differently, it should not be because it looked bad, but because that should not happen to any person, not because it was one particular person who is closer to us or who we care more about or who happens to be in the spotlight. And the choices that led up to that incident were many layers of discretion. And like the events of June 3rd, 2020, which I believe were lawful exercises of discretion to use tear gas and pepper balls against children and young adults in our community, the, the system relies on discretion to be humane, to not make those choices or to have different outcomes. So, I really challenge us to think, is that a system that is sustainable and safe for our entire community, or can we work together to look for alternatives to that system?
I agree. Well said. Counsel Burgess.
Well said. It appears, you know, this is, I think, really at the root of one of the things we're challenged with, is how what happened seems to have been normalized. And that's a concern, right? We've been, we've been working on, on this or been engaged in the issue of trying to address, you know, how we, how we make sure the, the community is safe. So, it was a little bit startling to see that we, you know, that, that something happened and it seemed to kind of be, you know, normalized on some level. So, I think it is an important issue. We clearly, you know, there's, there needs to be some discussion of procedurally, how do we move forward so that that, that doesn't happen. It does, you know, Counselor Weiner, you had mentioned, you know, it does seem like there, in my mind, it could be a relatively simple process of how we try to assess what a situation is and what's the appropriate action.
Is somewhat from, from my side, but it wasn't, it's not at all about optics. It's about, is this an issue of public safety?
Yeah.
Is someone a danger to public safety? If not, then there are other ways to address it, that, that are much more appropriate, humane and, and decent for helping to build community and trust.
Okay. Any other report?
Yeah, so, both on, where was the, on November 6th, both the mayor and I were invited to participate in a Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition event that took place at Parkview Church. It was Phase 2 of the South District Affordable Housing Advocacy Initiative, sponsored by the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition, the city, Astic Planning, Habitat for Humanity and funded by a Human Rights Commission grant. And it was, it was, from my perspective, was a really impressive process because they had engaged, they go, they went to community members where they were, outside their, an apartment residence, they engaged them, explained to some of them what their, what their rights were and what they were about and asked them if they wanted to participate in this process. So, by the time, the, the hour that the, the mayor and I participated was essentially having a discussion with them about what, how, how you approach the city, how, how you get on a commission, how, what some of the other modalities are. It just, it is, I, it's, if you have a chance to participate in one, I highly recommend it. It's, I think they're, that what they've launched is a, a really productive educational process that can bring, you know, sort of literally more effective, probably than listening posts, can really bring the council to the people and allow them, to people and allow them to understand what their rights are and how they can exercise them.
Good. Anyone else? Okay, before we move on, I really would like to acknowledge Mary Mashar and Joe Backham, who both announced that they are not running for reelection next year. And their 20-plus years of service to Iowa City in the State House, you know, they really work hard for the residents of Iowa City. So, this is just to acknowledge them. Item 21, and report from the city staff. Item A, City Manager Office.
No report tonight, thank you.
Okay. You with the city manager?
No report, thank you.
City Attorney?
Nothing for me either, thank you.
That's city clerk. Okay. Item 22, for my first running meeting, motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Weiner, second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abos, same sign. We adjourned.